Good evening. I hope you've all been warm enough and stayed out of the snow if you were over the hill. I'm calling this meeting of Half Moon Bay City Council, February 5th, 2019, to order. May we have a roll call first?
Councilmember Brownstone?
Here.
Councilmember Ruddock?
Here.
Councilmember Penrose?
Here.
Vice Mayor Eisen?
Here.
Mayor Rarback?
Here.
You have a forum.
Yeah, let me see. Thanks. As per our new agenda order, we're going to start out with what I think is the most important part of the meeting's, public forum. And public forum means you have three minutes to talk on any item that is not on the agenda. Our first speaker will be Margarita Vasquez, followed by Rosabella Carubius.
Good evening, council. My name is Marita Vazquez and I am a resident at Half Moon Bay. I am here today because I want to talk to you guys a little about affordable housing and how much is a crisis here in Half Moon Bay. Growing up in Half Moon Bay, I moved around a lot. I attended Hatch, Fairland View, and then finally graduated from Algonado Elementary School. As a kid, I did not like moving around within schools, but I knew that it was to accommodate my growing family. And now I've been living with my family in the same home for 10 years, and it's been harder and harder to just expand or grow a better living space, even though my family keeps growing. So I urge you to start a project for affordable housing in Half Moon Bay in order for me to be able to stay here. Thank you.
Thank you, Margarita. I agree completely. Rosalba, I hope I'm pronouncing that name right. Carubius? Is she here? Followed by Paul Gregorius.
Horses.
Horses.
Yeah. Sorry. Yes. Good evening. I'm here because I've been here for four years without finding a place where to live. I have three children and there's no place that would accept me with children. I would like to have, I would like to see if there will be available housing of low income, for long income. As I am, there are so many families that are without a place where to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Gregorius, followed by Joaquin Jimenez.
Good evening, council members and staff. Goodness, that's wild tonight. My name is Paul Gregorius, and I'm here tonight as a representative of the Immigration Action Group, or IAG of the Coast Side, to talk about protecting cannabis workers in Half Moon Bay. This past Sunday, the membership of IAG voted to ask your council to enact a regulation that would require employers in cannabis-related operations in Half Moon Bay to warn their employees who are not citizens that they may risk deportation and/or non-admissibility to the United States if they are even associated with any aspect of the cannabis industry. Such a warning is needed because people are generally unaware that such involvement in the cannabis industry, even if permitted under state or local law, is generally prohibited under federal law and is already being used by the Department of Homeland Security as a basis for deporting non-resident immigrants and even some who are lawful permanent residents of the United States. If you decide to take action on this matter, you will be doing something similar to what San Mateo County did when it included such a provision as Section 7Q of its ordinance, number 4807, which became effective on December 13th of last year. I'm not going to try to explain the details of our request during this brief comment tonight. Instead, I'll email these details, including information from the ILRC, or Immigrant Legal Resource Center, plus some draft language for the warning to all council members and to our city manager in the next few days. Jean Knight, a member of IAG Steering Committee along with her legislative advocacy team, is asking that the council agendize this matter for urgent action, and IAG will be pleased to share any information that we have about this issue with you and city staff. We look forward to working with you on this, and we thank you for your time and attention tonight.
Thank you, Paul. If you could make sure that we receive this request. Joaquin Jimenez, followed by Ruby Salazar.
Good evening. About 31 years ago, I've said it several times, we moved in here to Half Moon Bay, to this beautiful community. In this community, you know, it came to a point, Dr. Penrose, you might be familiar, there used to be a big yellow house down the street, on Johnson Street, right next to the church. We used to live there, on the second floor. Three rooms, one half bathrooms. At one point, it was 21 of us, and that's what's happening right now. 30 years later, it's still happening. I don't know how you grew up. I don't know if you ever had your own room, you know, space where you can study. I didn't. My days, you know, it was either school, playing sports, a part-time job after school. Between that, you know, I spent my days in the library. So I had to, you know, I knew I had to do something with my life. 21 people. Not everybody was related, you know. I can tell you, you know, families that came, you know, they stayed with us. It was crowded to use the bathrooms. Luckily, you know, I had two good PE teachers, Mr. Short, Mr. Mcnevin. They actually forced us to shower, you know, during PE, so we had access to showers, or else, you know, we could not be at that house. It's going on right now. We have teenagers, limited water to shower. That's not healthy. You're also doctors, you know. Everybody knows, alright? So right now, is that about we asking you, we are telling you to, we need action, like, soon, now. We need affordable housing in Half Moon Bay. It is possible. We live in one of the richest counties in California. There's money available. I don't know why it's taking too long. You know, we've been, you know, pretty relaxed, pretty calm, you know, asking you to help us out, help our community. We lose, you know, community. You seen the news, the paper article? We don't know about the paper article. I see it may still run right now. Is that what we want? Pretty soon, you're gonna have, you know, if you go to any restaurant on the coast, more than half of the staff in the restaurant is Spanish speaker. In the kitchen, the servers, dishwashers, in the farms. Who's gonna take care of the farms? The farm owners are, and they struggle right now. Even though they have employees, you know, getting paid minimum wage, pretty soon, they're not gonna be able to do that. So we're not, we are here right now, we're not here to, you know, to ask you. We're not here, please build some homes, affordable homes for our community. We're telling you, we need action right now. We need it. We need homes for everybody. Where teenagers can grow up having their own room, their own space, their own privacy. That's what we need right now. Casas para todos, also everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Joaquin. Ruby Salazar, followed by Daniela Benito.
Good evening. My name is Ruby Salazar, and I am a graduate of Half Moon Bay High School, and I am here to ask the council to consider adding affordable housing units to Half Moon Bay. There are many residents in Half Moon Bay that struggle daily to pay their rent or mortgage, and for young adults, it's almost impossible for them to live in Half Moon Bay without living with their parents or having financial assistance, especially if they're in college. This is much more than just an affordable housing issue. It's a health issue. Poor housing conditions are associated with a wide range of healthy, of health conditions, including respiratory infections, asthma, lead poisoning, injuries, and mental health. This is exactly what happens when we have three families living in one small house, struggling to pay bills. I asked the Half Moon Bay City Council to consider adding affordable housing project in Half Moon Bay and including the youth voice in that project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruby. Daniela Benito, followed by Alina Ion.
Good afternoon. My name is Daniela Benito. I am a student at Half Moon Bay High School. Housing has recently gone more expensive while wages have been remained flat. Families living in unaffordable housing reduces their spending on other necessities and are more vulnerable to economic shocks. Housing already makes up the largest share of most American spending, and intensifying housing costs forces individuals to spend less on food, healthcare, and other necessities. The competition for limited housing units pushes job seekers away from centers of economic activity. Over the past 30 years, the flow of less skilled workers to cities that offer high-paying jobs and opportunity has greatly declined as a result of preventing expensive housing. Longer commutes harm the economic and general well-being of individuals and impose more traffic congestion, air pollution, and infrastructure maintenance costs on society at large. Housing plays a critical role in people's lives. It serves as a major consumption item, acts as a key source of stability and safety, and hooks people in places where they can pursue education or employment opportunities. California has the highest poverty rate of any of the 50 states. California also ranks 49th in both housing affordability and cost of living. It ranks 50th in homelessness and 40th in the overall tax burden. For the region to attract and accommodate new residents, it must provide a diversity of housing options that meets the needs of all its residents. Renters and owners, high incomes and low incomes. For those reasons, I urge you to take action now and look into different opportunities for affordable housing projects. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Daniela. Alina Ion, followed by Daisy Sarabia.
Hello. My name is Alina Ion, and I am a 16-year-old student at Half Moon Bay High School. I have been a resident at Half Moon Bay all of my life. I am here to talk to you about affordable housing in the county of San Mateo. There are many things that are normal to me that an average person living specifically in Half Moon Bay does not see. For example, in my house, there are two families and my grandparents living in a small trailer of three rooms, two bathrooms, small kitchen and living room. This has caused for people in my home to live uncomfortably in the living room on the floor for over four years. All of this is due to housing in Half Moon Bay not being affordable. The family in my home is continuous, has continuously tried to look for something in their price range that would allow for a better lifestyle, but so far, there has been no luck. And this family happens to be my aunt and cousins. It is hard to see my aunt working long hours on food stamps, trying to make a living, and not knowing where to start. Another example of housing not being affordable is something that my aunt is currently facing. My aunt has recently almost been evicted due to rent not being affordable, and this includes three families living in the house. There are reasons as to why my family has experienced people in, people having to live together in small spaces or almost getting evicted, and it is due to rent not being paid because of high cost. This is important to me because the city of Half Moon Bay is all I know, and it is somewhere I would like to continue to live in, but possibly would not be able to because of rent continuously going up. I urge you to consider all that I have said and work on projects regarding housing in Half Moon Bay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Alina. Daisy Sarabia, followed by Kalen Carrillo.
Good evening. My name is Daisy Sarabia, and I'm a resident of Half Moon Bay. I'm here today to speak on affordable housing. I'm very passionate about this certain topic because it affects me, my friends, and my family. As a kid, my dad was always working, and I thought it was normal. Recently, it was brought to my attention why. According to California Housing Partnership Corporation, in April of 2018, it was stated that renters in San Mateo need to earn $65 an hour to afford an average monthly rent of over $3,000. I see my dad for a maximum of two hours a day. He wakes up at 1:00 in the morning to drive an hour away to get to work on time. He is one of the 60% of workers that travel to San, out of, no, he travels to San Mateo County for work, which also increases air pollution and risk of traffic collisions. The amount of times my dad has told me that his life was put at risk for almost getting in an accident is too many. He works over 12 hours a day to be able to support his family of six, to provide an education, food, and not to mention, he sends money to our family members out of state to help support them too. Based on my knowledge, the majority of people I am friends with share homes. I personally know three families in one house still struggling to have a roof over their heads and food on their plates. You have to start working right away to support their families, which leads to lack of education from always working, which can lead to them not even having a chance to go to college. For these reasons and more, I urge you to take action with affordable housing because eventually, nobody will be able to afford it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Daisy. Kalen Carrillo, followed by Belinda Ariaga.
Hello. My name is Kalen Carrillo, and I've been a resident at Half Moon Bay my whole life. I am here today to talk about the importance of affordable housing because in the future, I would still like to be a resident in Half Moon Bay. However, according to the California Housing Partnership Corporation, San Mateo County needs 24,628 more affordable rental homes to meet current demands. This worries me because I'm at risk of displacement since it's not affordable to live in Half Moon Bay as a young professional. Furthermore, I'm concerned that many young people like me will leave Half Moon Bay and may not be able to afford returning. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Belinda Ariaga, followed by Alondra Rodriguez.
Good evening, city council. How are you, mayor? Well, I wanted to talk a little bit about both topics, but first, I want to start by congratulating the Half Moon Bay community for all the love they have been sharing with several families that recently arrived into our community, asylum seekers. And I think it's so important in hearing what everyone's saying. And I think it's so important in hearing what everyone's saying is the real theme of the conversation is that Half Moon Bay is a wonderful community to live in. And Half Moon Bay has extended its arms, the IAG folks, our local Latino community. So many loving and caring community members have come to give these families a ride, a smile, holding their hand, resources, donations. I mean, it's just been an outpouring of love. And I think it's that same care that we really need to give back to our whole community for housing that is just and fair. Because, you know, being on the front lines of working with the families, it's really heartbreaking to see one family at a time having to move. And it's also heartbreaking to hear the stories of our youth that I've watched grow up, having to live in conditions of not knowing whether they're gonna have a home tomorrow, whether they're gonna be displaced, whether the landlord is gonna suddenly raise a rent and their families can't afford it. And I think the most important thing is these are hard-working families. All of the families that are here, all of the voices that you hear, they give back to our economy of Half Moon Bay. I've said it time and time again that the Latino community is the backbone of the economic engine of our community. And so, it's not just about housing, but it's actually a crisis. I mean, think about, what would you do if we had no longer the force and strength and wealth of the community that we have here today working so hard to give back to make Half Moon Bay the place it is? So it's not even a conversation about housing. It's also a conversation about a crisis. And, you know, today I was, you know, watching a little bit of the inauguration speech and all this conversation about building a wall and, this is the wall. Housing shortage in our community is a wall. In our community, we're hearing everything about building the wall on the border. We've already built it here. When you have families that have had to move away to Oregon, have been pushed out, who are barely hanging on to stay, who are crying to try to find a place. We have a mom and four children right now that we don't know where we're gonna put them once it's time to find a home. And so, not only am I asking you, I'm begging you for urgency to act now to save our community, to address the crisis, to break down the wall, and to really hear the voices of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Belinda. Alondra Rodriguez, followed by Teresa Ramirez.
Good evening. My name is Alondra Rodriguez and I'm a recent Half Moon Bay High School graduate. Rent control is extremely important to me and my family because Half Moon Bay is home. I have moved ten different times and I'm only nineteen. I've lived with up to eleven people sharing one bathroom. I've never had a room to call my own. I've never had a home to call my own here. My parents are hard-working parents and are being paid minimum wage. My dad retired five years ago, but because rent is extremely expensive, he hasn't fully retired and is still working forty-plus hours a week. We can't afford to rent a home, let alone buy a house. I've had a couple of family, I've had a couple of family members and friends that have moved from this beautiful town simply because rent prices are just too high. And I think it's time for that to end. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Teresa Ramirez, followed by Lily Ray.
Hello, I'm Teresa Ramirez. I'm a kid who moved like three times, maybe even more. I have a question. Are we actually making history right now letting, having Latinos pay higher rent than everyone else? Thirty-five million people move in the U.S. per year, I think. Take two thousand and fourteen, for instance. Four, forty-five million people moved door-to-door that year. An average American moves eleven point five, eleven point seven time, during the time through their whole entire year.
Okay, and Chavalita is really proud because she was one of the families that lived at five-five-five Kelly Street. So that's a really special home, Chavalita. And you loved it there, right?
Yeah.
And what grade are you in, Chavalita?
Fourth.
Fourth grade, so I'll just say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lily Ray, followed by Gabriel Aguilar.
Hi, my name is Lily Ray and I appreciate the moments that I can speak here tonight. I actually live over the hill, but it has become to my attention as a resident of San Mateo County, what a travesty this is to have such a wonderful community like Half Moon Bay but can't meet the needs of their residents. I'm part of a group, it's called the Bay Area Border Relief. There are about forty-five of us that are from all over the Bay Area and we've been focusing our, a lot of outreach, donations, love, and trips to the South Texas border to help the residents, the families who are coming from all different places in Central America. And we have been able to bring two of those families here to Half Moon Bay and like Belinda said, the outpouring of this community that is taking care of these two families is so inspiring and just so truly phenomenal and just says everything about Half Moon Bay. But it's clear that the housing is a huge issue and it's an issue all over San Mateo County. But Half Moon Bay in particular, it's such a unique community. So I urge you to help with the affordable housing situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Gabriel Aguilar, followed by Antonio. I can't read the writing.
Good evening, council members. My name is Gabriel Aguilar. I've been living in the coast side for the last thirty years. And I've been moving from place to place, Half Moon Bay and the other communities of the coast. And during these thirty years, I've been seeing the crazy increments on rent and on the house values, forcing people to move out of the area. We urge you to work on a project to provide affordable housing for our members in this community. My three children, I have three children. All of them went and are still going to the Cabrillo Unified School District. And I will hate to see them moving out of this beautiful community due to the difficulties to pay rent or to buy a house. Please help us to build a, or come up with a project to build houses for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabriel. Antonio Montezuma, followed by Belinda Vargas.
Buenas noches, soy Antonio Mora.
Good evening, I'm Antonio Mora. I live with a fear. I live in one bedroom and we live with a fear of being evicted. I have two children and we need some privacy. They go to school here. Many people, they have left here because of the high rents and they have to move to other places. I ask you to take, put hands in work so we can have affordable housing. We all can have affordable housing.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you, Antonio. Belinda Vargas, followed by Pepper Black.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Belinda Vargas.
Good evening, my name is Belinda Vargas. I've been here for four years. I have been moving for different houses more than five times. And we agree that the lack of money in order to pay the rent. I have many friends, girlfriends, that have moved to other states. Because of the lack of money and not having a place where to live. I have also asked and questioned myself is if there is a day that is coming that I will have to move to. And they are very sad because they have been living all their life here in Half Moon Bay and Half Moon Bay was their home and now they had to move. And if you can do something for this community that they need a place where to live, that would be a great help. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Belinda. Pepper Black is our last public forum speaker.
And I regret coming in late. I thought you were meeting in City Hall. So, I finally found you by looking you up on the web. I'm also with Bay Area Border Relief and I drove from Berkeley because I really wanted to first express gratitude to this community. I'm part of the effort that brought these two families here to your community and I wish that you had someone who would chronicle what you're doing because I believe it could be a prototype for other communities in the country to do what you're doing to reach out to these families. That you have heart, you're showing your humanity, and you're being resourceful. And so I believe that you're also going to be extremely resourceful about what we're all facing in California. This housing shortage that's socioeconomic. And that it's part of a compromise of a rich community that even though I'm an outsider here, I'm constantly drawn here because of the way you live your lives here and because of your leadership. So I'm counting on you to also set an example for many other municipalities in the way you manage this. And thank you so much for your time and I regret coming in late.
Thank you, Pepper. I'm not supposed to comment very extensively about the public comments, but I will tell you that I hear what's going on. I'm fully aware, as I believe most of the council is, about the crisis and that word has come up a couple of times. Affordable housing really needs to be addressed and I believe the council in the very near future will take this up. We're beginning to form listening sessions, which I'll talk about in a minute. And then we're going to get our priorities clear. And based on that, we will, I fully hope that affordable housing will be at the top of the list or high up there. It really is important. So thank you, all the speakers who came. I was very impressed with all the heartfelt comments. It's really tough for a lot of people, I understand that. And I thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Yes, we can. I wanted to say that despite the way it appears, staff and council have the issue of affordable housing constantly in our minds as well as our hearts. I meet with people all the time trying to get a project going in Half Moon Bay as do everyone on our staff, not everyone, but the people that are on the staff that deal with housing and the other council members here. So it's not an issue that we, that we need to have brought to our attention although God bless you for coming and don't stop coming because we need to keep it at the forefront. I think if anything, this will help to reinforce the need that we know is here and help us to do things as quickly as we can. The other thing I wanted to say was, last week we talked about rental protection and we heard a lot of people from the real estate community say, "This is rent control and you can't do it." And my response to that was baloney. "We haven't heard from you." And you're here speaking to this very, very issue, why it's so important. The other issue we need to take up, and I said this last week, is increasing the minimum wage citywide, so.
Stay tuned. Now we come to proclamations and presentations and our first presentation is on the Big Lift program.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Joyd Ardenell, the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction at Cabrillo Unified School District. And I'm here this evening with Keith Sernak of the Cabrillo Education Foundation and Rosalba Segura, who is on the board of the Cabrillo Education Foundation and she's also, works in our migrant department in Cabrillo Unified School District. Tonight, we're going to be presenting to you about the work that we've done together as the Cabrillo Unified School District, the Cabrillo Education Foundation, and the Big Lift Collaborative. Before I get started with this presentation, we prepared this, we reviewed it, we practiced it. This part is impromptu. I will tell you that growing up, I also slept on the floor. We had fourteen people living at home. I slept next to my dogs, that was my place in the house. We had a lot of people rotating through the bathrooms, whole families living in small rooms. And in that childhood that I had, I developed this passion for education because I felt that that was the way that I could contribute in the world to make it a better place. And we, I, working with my governing board, you, working with the community here, we serve the same people. The people here in this room are the parents in our communities, they're the students in our school district, and they're coming from the work that we do to support their education. I want to make that link because the passion that I hear in the work that you're doing is the passion that I also have in the work that I do, serving the families here in Cabrillo, this Cabrillo Unified School District. With that said, I'm gonna get started with our presentation and talk about... With that said, I'm going to get started with our presentation and talk about an extreme challenge that we have. We're dedicated to closing the achievement gap. The idea of an achievement gap is huge. There's a lot of ways to look at it. And we want to focus on one small piece, one thing that we can really focus on to make a difference. And that is closing the achievement gap for students in literacy. There is the Big Lift Collaborative who's really focusing on this across San Mateo County. And in 2015, when we started the Big Lift Collaborative, there was estimated about 43% of San Mateo County's children were not reading proficiently yet by the end of third grade. Our goal as a county is to reach 80%. And I can share with you that in the past three years, since 2015, we've made a 9% gain, which is challenging. Because as you know, we do not have control of all the factors. And we're going to talk later on in this presentation about how we're using our strategy to make that difference. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Keith as one of our partners in this work.
Hi, I'm Keith Sernak, the Executive Director of the Cabrillo Education Foundation. And we work to champion student success across the coast side. Our first attempt at that was the multimillion dollar Big Lift grant. And in 2015, the Cabrillo Education Foundation, the Cabrillo Unified School District, and Coastside Children's Programs came together to co-write this grant. It focuses on early learning. The goal is to close the achievement gap. And what we want to see is that 80% of our third graders are reading proficiently. When we look at this pathway to success, one of the things that we realize when you look at the Lona Corner is that it's critical that our students are reading proficiently by the end of third grade. So our CEF, Cabrillo Education Foundation, what we have been doing is funding the K-3 literacy initiatives. We fund informational libraries, we have purchased thousands and thousands of books, and we also provide professional teacher development with the Columbia University Teachers College. To date, we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars. And why is this so important? Well, if you look to the left of this and you look at this pathway to success, if our children and our students do not have, ready for pre-K readiness, and if they can't read proficiently by the end of third grade, then they're going to be left behind when we get to the college and career readiness. And especially left behind when we get to college graduation, high school graduation, college graduation, and them having a successful secondary education. The Big Lift Collaborative is now expanded. It started off very small, but under the Big Lift Collaborative, that is managed and led, coordinated by Elizabeth Shuck, it's now an umbrella for both CEF, the Big Lift, the Cabrillo Unified School District, the Coastside Children's Programs, Head Start, San Mateo County Office of Education, at least, 10 other entities that collaborate across Half Moon Bay for best practices. And to talk about some of the best practices with the Big Lift is Rosalva Segura.
Good night and buenas noches. Again, like Joy, I really relate with what all my familias están hablando. I think I was one of the 20 families that lived with Joaquín Jiménez because we went to school together and we kind of did the same things. We went to the library, getting tutoring. I had to live in many different ranches and even homeless at one point. My work with the community and my work with the CEF and the school district, it's really because of a passion, a passion of educating our Latino families, our second language families, and our low-income families. There's crisis in education, there's crisis in housing, but the biggest crisis that I have experienced myself is to educate and give the families equal access to supports and to areas that they really need the support. Preschool, can you help me do this? Preschool is one of the four pillars of the Big Lift Initiative. High quality of preschool, family engagement, attendance, and summer school. We have in our district a state preschool that, thanks to the collaboration and the efforts within the Big Lift, we were able to become licensed and hold a state preschool contract that brings the sustainability of a preschool going forward. But we need the collaboration, we need the efforts to continue the high quality of the services. Family engagement, I call this family engagement, I have five different families in this room that they're part of the preschool program and they're part of Inspiring Summers. So that is Big Lift Collaboration. Alonda, she's right there, she's one of the families that also contributes and provides support to the Big Lift effort. Attendance and summer school, I'm going to let Joy speak about, but I'm going to go to my next part, which is the high-quality preschool program. We have 30 student spaces for preschool, our preschool listos. We have coaching and family engagement, as I mentioned before, and the leverage with the funding sources to make this sustainable. We have migrant funding, which is federal, state, district money, and Big Lift is federal, state, and county. State preschool, we do a contract through the Department of Education that going, again, going forward, as long as we meet their requirements and the needs in the coast, we're hoping that we're going to sustain our license and our contract. Family engagement, we provide a lot of parenting classes, a lot of family events, family committees, parent committees, excuse me, parent cafes, and a lot of orientation and celebrations through the whole district. From preschool, which we get students of the age of three, through graduation and sometimes even out-of-school youth, students who are here to work and they're not enrolling any of school. And I'm going to pass it to Joy.
So the four pillars are based on research, including the preschool, which Rosalva spoke about, including the parent engagement, which Rosalva spoke about. The next piece is attendance. When we think about students in school, we want to make sure that they're actually in school. Because when they're not in school, it changes their ability to learn, not just for the student who's missing school, but also for the other students in class. It creates a disruption for everyone when you have kids who are cycling in and out of a classroom. For that reason, we're changing those expectations that parents have. Sometimes, I've seen in preschool, and that parents say, "You know, we're going to go to Disneyland," or "We're going to go on a vacation because we, for whatever reason," or "We're not going to send our child to school because..." And those challenges of bringing kids to school start to become ingrained even at preschool so that when they're in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, you see these habits forming and kids not coming to school. So what we're doing is to provide that consistency for all students, having earlier communication with families, letting them know at preschool that the expectation is actually that they attend. And then having frequent communication with families to remind them about the importance of attendance. Of course, nobody wants a child to come to school who has a fever. And if they have reasons for not attending due to bereavement or other reasons, we understand that. But we want to make sure that there's that shared understanding of the importance of attendance. We also provide summer learning, which is called Big Lift Inspiring Summers. It used to be called Bliss. So those are some of the names that you may hear it as. It's a 20-day learning program. It serves incoming kindergarteners through third grade. And with the Inspiring Summers program, we really see these measured gains in kindergarten readiness. What that means is that when these students come into kindergarten, they're more prepared than students who did not participate in the program. And we see those changes even when they enter into first grade, that that Big Lift experience from preschool as well as Inspiring Summers continues to hold and have impact even a year later. So with that, we want to thank you for the continued support that you've given us, the $15,000 to support our Big Lift cash match for the 2018-2019 preschool. Please enjoy the pictures of the children there because when I saw those pictures, I thought, "This is what I'm going to put on the big screen." Absolutely adorable. I didn't even know they have robes in that size. Or let alone the hats. How did you get them to stay on their heads? With that, we do have an ask. And I'm going to go back to sharing with you that passion that I have in education. And I think it's a shared passion that we have in this room to serve this community. And I ask that you continue to support the preschool in the 1920 school year by continuing the $15,000 Big Lift cash match and that you consider increasing the support to do the cash match for our 2019 Inspiring Summers program. And I'm going to turn it over to Keith as one of our partners to tell you why.
Since I've been here over the last five years, one of the priorities that I've had is building partnership bridges, really looking at that leverage that we can provide through collective impact. And to date, over $2.5 million of over-the-hill monies has come in to Half Moon Bay for early learning. Our Cabrillo Education Foundation has paid approximately $65,000 thus far in the community cash match to date. And as I said before, hundreds of thousands of dollars for K-3 literacy. It's approximately a 10-to-1 ratio. For every $10 that comes in to this district from over the hill, we're asked to pay one. It's an incredible investment return financially, but more so for the future of our students. But we need partners to support this and to continue. You know, there's an old saying, and it sounds very trite, that it takes a village to raise a child, but I think that's true. And I also think it takes a village to educate a child. And we welcome the Half Moon Bay City Council to be a partner with us as in our village as we look to the future success of these children. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll certainly consider your requests. As part of the new proclamations and presentations, we're starting a new feature that it's important, at least for me, that the mid-coast and the city cooperate. I've been going to mid-coast community council meetings and learning a lot and I hope contributing a little bit to the mid-coast to explain where we're coming from because there's a real synergy between the city and the mid-coast. So starting tonight, once a month, at the city council meetings, we're going to have a presentation from the mid-coast community council. And starting off, we're going to have Claire Touton, who's the president of the mid-coast community council, tell us what's going on on the mid-coast.
Thank you. We have really enjoyed having, I don't know, is this the right, is this good? Okay. We've really enjoyed having your mayor at our meetings for the last couple of years. It's been very helpful to us to understand what's happening to our south. And for those who don't know, the mid-coast community council is an elected advisory body representing Miramar through Montero. And we just want to let you know a little bit about what we're doing. A couple of things we've done so far this year, we've had a presentation of the county's proposed heritage tree ordinance, in which they're trying to balance the concerns people have about safety about trees with a push toward more heritage trees. And it's fairly complicated, but they have come and at least opened the conversation with us. Also, something we share in common is the Miramar Road area. There is, we are supporting a grant application for redesigning the bridge, which is about to fall down. We are supporting that, but we're also working with the county public works because we feel like the community has some desires about that bridge that may not be currently being represented by the county planning people. So we're going to be working with them on that. Coming up next week, relating to what everybody else has been saying here, there will be a presentation of the county's new draft ordinance on tenant protection. So that may be of interest to people. Also, we have an opening on the council, which is usually elected, but because Lisa Ketchum, who is, you know, our, who's been really instrumental in a lot of what we've done, is now on the county planning commission. We do have an open slot. We have three candidates, we'd like to have more. So if anybody knows someone in the unincorporated county who might be interested in serving on the council, have them look at our website, midcoastcommunitycouncil.org, and the applications are there. So thank you for the opportunity. I look forward to being here again.
Thank you, Claire. Any questions? The mayor's announcements are going to be brief, but I want to alert you to three upcoming listening sessions. This is something that we started last year. And in these listening sessions, there's no formal agenda. Council people are there just to hear what the community has to offer. We try to do it at more convenient times for people who are working or have families. We have three upcoming listening sessions. The first one is Saturday, March 2, at 11:00 a.m. So that, on the weekend, makes it easier for some people. That'll be right here, that's the first session. Then on Sunday, the day after, March 3, we'll have our second listening session, and that will be in Spanish. We will have headsets for those people who want a translation from the Spanish, but the main presentations are going to be expected in Spanish. That's at 1:30 to 3:30, and that's also in this room, in the Ted Adcock Center. And the third listening session is on Thursday, March 7, at 6:00 p.m. So that's more convenient for people who work. And that one will be in Canyatta Cove. So anybody who wants to get the word out that the city council is here to listen to your needs, problems, questions, praise, please come to these listening sessions. Yeah, why not? Yeah. The next item on the agenda is the report out from our closed session, and I'm going to ask the city attorney to do that.
Yes, thank you, mayor and council. I am doing a report out of the recent closed session where we met at 6 o'clock to discuss two matters and the council took reportable action with respect to the first matter, which is the litigation entitled "The City of Half Moon Bay versus CSG Consultants and ACIC," which stands for the American Contractors Indemnity Company. The council unanimously approved a settlement with one of the defendants, the ACIC, which is a surety company. This is litigation involving the bike, eight-foot-wide bike pedestrian trail segment that runs from Wavecrest Road to Seymour Street that developed cracks a few months after it was constructed. So the good news is that the council approved the settlement with ACIC, which will mean that the surety will provide the city with a $279,000 performance bond so that the city can use to work on the repair. The litigation is still ongoing, however, and the remaining party, CSG- The litigation is still ongoing, however, and the remaining party, CSG Consultants, we will continue to proceed with litigation and/or settlement, hopefully with that party. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is city manager updates to council. Bob?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I don't have any additional updates, but I would like to make a comment on the consent calendar, which will be the next item. Staff would like to pull item 1J and simply trail it to the, our recommendation would be to trail it to the end of the consent calendar. Staff would like to make a short presentation, and included in the presentation on that item will be an adjustment to our recommendation. So then, when you take your action, our recommendation will be to take a slightly different action than what's included in the resolution before you.
Got it. Thank you. Does any council member want to pull any item on the consent calendar? I have one speaker card for one consent item, so I think we should listen to that one speaker before we take action. And that item is 1G, and the speaker is Jerry Steinberg, and the subject is Amendment Number Two to the Professional Service Agreements with Fourleaf.
Mayor, city council, the, this particular item is to have Brian Lee continue to do his work, and I would, as a resident, would say that that would be very, very necessary. In particular, the item, he has worked on some of the Pacific Ridge things that have been going on, and we have a question right now. Rather than having neighbors against neighbors, we'd like to see a professional engineering attempt at deciding who closed Silver Avenue. I've asked for information from the city, there is none. I've asked for information from Caltrans, they have none. No one knows why and when and where. So I think Mr. Lee definitely should, the contract should definitely be signed, and we would like to see some information and get past this point of using the Coastal Commission as the adult in the room and approach this on an engineering basis so that Caltrans can make a decision. And I think they already studied some of it, I've talked to Maz, and I think you'd be surprised at some of the actions that have developed. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. I'm willing to take a motion on the consent calendar.
Okay. I move that we approve the consent calendar. Item 1A, wave reading of resolutions and ordinances. Item 1B, amendment to agreement with Maisen Associates for audit assistance services. Item 1C, amendment to agreement with management partners for financial consulting assistance. Item 1D, treasurer's report for the quarter ending September 30, 2018. Item 1E, Fourth Amendment to the Mill Street parking lot lease. Item 1F, Second Amendment to agreement with the Huffman Broadway Group for environmentally sensitive habitat area mapping and policy support for the local coastal program update. Item 1G, Amendment Number Two to the Professional Services Agreement with Fourleaf Inc. Item 1H, dedication of public utility easement at 604 Metzger Street. Item 1I, Burke Williams &amp; Sorensen LLP's request for conflict waiver and consent to concurrent representation of the City of Half Moon Bay and Andrew Uchelli. 1K, approval of increased purchase order for Hassett Hardware. And that's it.
Do I hear a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent calendar is passed. We're going to go on to the last item, 1J, that the city manager just mentioned, so let's hear that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Maz was your unique city engineer. Tonight, we just want to give you a quick update on the Poplar Beach Emergency Drainage A little bit of background that's in the report, the Poplar Beach Access was threatened by erosion due to deteriorated drainage pipe that we were, that we had found doing field inspections and getting ready for the winter preparation. The city went forward and obtained the environment, sorry, emergency coastal development permit, which includes a requirement to come back for a final permit in the future. The construction period was from January 21 through the end of the month, January 31, and there were some unforeseen conditions, which I have some pictures about to show you, that has increased our original assessment of the cost. You can see here, this is taken from the top of the Poplar Beach access point on the left. When we started excavating to find the deteriorated pipe and replace it, we noticed that there was a previous attempt at repair that was currently, that wasn't part of any as built that we had available to us. With that, there was about 12 cubic yards of concrete that had encased an old pipe that was not, that was failing. And essentially, the concrete was being undermined by water passing underneath it. So once that was determined and found, the direction was to remove it so that we take care of that emergency while we have this open. And you can see here in the picture on the right that the crews worked diligently. At the one particular night, they had to go a little bit further, this is probably about 6:00 p.m. We were, there was some rain coming, that was predicted in the forecast, and it was imperative to take care of the last piece of the concrete slurry seal prior to closing that loop. This is what we have today. We were able to put the new pipe in, remove the old concrete and the old pipe, put in a new section of HPE pipe, put in a head wall that will, that will take the flow and concentrate into the pipe, and we extended that pipe out so that we can try to avoid the splashback from, to the bluff face itself. The next steps for the project, we will be presenting our findings from this emergency permit to the Coastal Commission this month as part of ongoing conversations and communication with them. We'll move forward with the preparation of final plans and specs and an estimate in the springtime, and looking at submitting a coastal development permit for those final improvements that will be concurrent with the PSNE. And we look to advertise, award, and complete the construction in the spring summertime when we have better weather to deal with this situation. So the recommendation, that modification here is that we are recommending that the council adopt this resolution authorizing the use of up to $55,000 rather than the $45,000 from the Capital Improvement Program, Project Number 604, which is the Emergency Response Program. That's the end of my presentation. Any questions, happy to answer them.
I'm not exactly sure what the project is. You've put the new pipe in, and you've got the retaining wall in. What's the rest of the project?
The rest of the project will entail a looking at long-term erosion control at the base of the drop-off. We have a pipe that's elevated, it's suspended in the, in the air, and so we're looking at making those modifications. We're also looking at the trail, the pedestrian access as a whole, the intent of the emergency drainage was to save the Poplar Beach vertical access. So part of the permanent project will be to look at increasing the accessibility of that vertical access down to the beach. So that'll be all one final project, and we'll look at any other tweaks and modifications we can make to the current drainage situation to make sure that we've addressed all of the concerns with erosion as much as we can as far as the bluff is concerned.
So you'll be bringing the pipe down further?
That's one of the alternatives that we're going to be considering.
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
I move that we pass 1J. I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We're now going to talk about the adaptation of, adoption of the Park's Master Plan, Mitigated Negative Declaration, and Mitigation Monitoring and Reporting Program. I think Jill is going to present the staff report.
Good evening, mayor and council, and just briefly, staff is delighted to be here tonight with this particular item. And to present, I'd like to turn it over right away to Scott Phillips. He's your associate planner, who is also the project manager for the Park's Master Plan, and he has a brief presentation for you, and we're going to try to click through quickly, but we are available to dig into anything at the end if you have questions.
Thanks, Jill, and Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. As Jill mentioned, we're very excited to bring the Park's Master Plan to you tonight for final adoption. And along the way, it's enjoyed a broad community support and careful oversight of the Parks and Recreation Commission. City council last saw this back in June, and you confirmed the scope and recommendations of the draft Park's Master Plan and directed staff to commence environmental review for conformance with the California Environmental Quality Act. More recently, the planning commission had a final review of the Park's Master Plan as well as the draft environmental document, and they recommended adoption to the city The next few slides are a little sample of the concepts and improvements to our existing parks that's in the Park's Master Plan. This one in particular is, you know, Carter Park, as we all know, and, you know, the idea is improvements to foster future performances at Carter Park.
Scott, just to be clear, that picture is not the current Carter Park?
No, just some examples and some ideas to kind of foster, you know, thoughts and, you know, future improvements to the park. Similarly, this is, you know, some ideas for Kitty Fernandez to incorporate arts in the park and, you know, other creative ideas. Keighley Park, the idea here is to improve park amenities by including more interactive Johnston, lower-impact activities, including bocce and horseshoe pits. And then Johnston Upper, landscape improvements, improvements to picnic areas that are compatible with the historic nature of the Johnston House. And Poplar Beach, as we talked about earlier, part of this is to address erosion concerns, improve access to the beach, integrate additional ADA accessibility, viewing areas and seating, as well as interpretive signage. And then Smithfield was identified for coordinated improvements. And then we also have a few proposed new facilities that are included in the Park's Master Plan, you know, along with emphasizing maintenance and upgrades to our existing So Magnolia Park, which is a city-owned property, the idea here was to maintain a natural setting, but, you know, make it a little more usable for Magnolia Park.
Is that the location?
Yes.
Yes, mhm. And then a, a big priority for the council, the last, last time you saw the Park's Master Plan was the idea of a community park. So the Park's Master Plan does have, you know, some thoughts and suggestions on a community park for the city. Linear parks, potential activities along trails as appropriate. You know, possibly a teen park, there's some ideas in the Park's Master Plan on that. And then everyone's favorite, the Aquatic Center. That also came up as, you know, the last time the council saw the Park's Master Plan. And then, let's see.
Oh, we don't have our slide.
Oh, we're missing a slide, but that's okay.
I'll tell you about it.
Yes, so part of the, part of our recommendation is to adopt the environmental document that was prepared in conformance with the California Environmental Quality Act. We did hire a consultant that prepared the, you know, evaluated the Park's Master Plan for potential impacts to the environment and recommended mitigation measures. Those have been included in the draft environmental document. And there is a minor text amendment, which Jill want, give a few words on?
This is just a little thing on page seven of your errata sheet for the initial study mitigated negative declaration. Mindful of the care that your planning commission takes with their oversight of environmental review, we just wanted to note that this statement about a 3 decibel threshold with regards to noise, there is a, an or, and it should have been an and, and we will, we will switch that out. But I think just in saying that, you can see in your package the amount of detail that went into the errata that went through the planning commission. They read every word, as they always do, and we appreciate that. And if you do have questions about the environmental documents, staff, of course, we can, we can field those, but also Barbara Beard from MIG, who prepared this work, is here as well. So she's, she's happy to come up and talk to you about anything that may have struck a chord. And before we turn it over, I just want to note a couple things. We see quite a few Parks and Recreation Commissioners in the room, and we're happy about that. We know that four out of five of you have seen many presentations on the Park's Master Plan, which is why we just glided over the top. I'm happy to give a deeper tour with our new council member if you wish. And in fact, we're already working on two of the Park's projects that were identified in the plan, Carter Park, as you've seen, plans are developing there, and then the Poplar Gateways Plan, which will address the drainage issue that you just saw presented to you. So with that, staff will conclude. You have a resolution that includes all the actions that we hope you will take tonight. Thank you. And thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Jill. Thank you, Scott. I have one speaker card on this item. Evelyn Erickson.
Mayor, city council members, thank you for the privilege of speaking. I'm here to speak about the Park's Master Plan. My name is Evelyn R.C. Erickson, and I wanted to share some comments as a Half Moon Bay resident and as one of the new members of the Parks and Recreation Commission. My comments do not reflect the opinions of the Parks and Recreation Commission in any way. I have read the Park's Master Plan, and I wanted to express my support in passing this plan. I do think it is well-done with recommendations and a set of realistic priorities and timelines for all 13 parks, along with the development of a potentially new community park. I am especially excited about the potential of Half Moon Bay developing one or more community gardens with a kitchen. The plan- The plan states that 15% of all housing in Half Moon Bay are multifamily. This percentage will only grow. As you know, many of these multifamily units may not have access to growing space. The plan also states that 24% of our population are children and teenagers. And as you know, in this world of technology, it is critical that the next generation learn how to grow the basics of growing and cooking their own food. One of the most critical parts of my life was attending an agriculture high school right in the middle of Queens, New York, John Bond High School. It was required that we manage a plot of land 12 feet by 12 feet to grow a variety of vegetables, herbs, and flowers. This experience changed my life. The magic of growing and eating your own food is like nothing else. I loved it so much that I changed my major from veterinary and science to agriculture and education. And after graduating from Cornell University, I was able to teach kids for seven years about the importance of growing and preparing their own food. Here in Half Moon Bay, we are blessed to have the great weather in which we can grow year-round and produce a large amount of healthy foods with very little acreage. I do believe that having access to high-quality organic vegetables and fruits will only ensure our small community will have a hopeful and healthy future. Thank you once again for the privilege of speaking, and I look forward to being an advocate for not only the Parks Master Plan, but the community garden with kitchen.
Thank you, Evelyn. I had no idea that there was agriculture in Queens, but thank you. Council, do you have questions for Jill or Scott?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. And this has been a process extending over approximately two years. And it was one of our first real, serious community outreach programs, you know, around the park issues. It's something people can get excited about, kind of like, you know, the bikes and the pedestrian master committee, too. So it's been a lot of work on the part of staff. We've had great consultant support, lots of input. I think it was a great process, and I think we have a great outcome. So looking forward to getting it implemented, and thanks to everyone.
Yeah, no, I'm very excited for this. And, you know, as part of the report, I don't know, we had, I believe, two parks that currently met potential in our town, and every other park was below potential. So I'm excited for the future of what we can do with this, with this plan, especially Proposition 68 funds. I know we've talked about what we can do to fund some of these projects. So Carter Park, I'm excited. I think we're going to make some good movement on that one within the next year. And Poplar, obviously, as well. I'm excited that we've prioritized a few of them right off the bat. I think that's brilliant, and looking forward to getting the rest of these parks above potential in the near future.
I just have a few comments also. My appointee to Planning Commission made 16 comments that were incorporated in the final environmental documentation. I just wanted to acknowledge that Jimmy Benjamin works hard, and he had a lot to offer. I was confused as to what the final Parks Master Plan recommended for the number of acres per thousand residents. Jill, is that five acres?
Yes, your council colleague has it, five acres per thousand, which matches the subdivision ordinance Quimby Act maximum for parkland standard, and it's equivalent to what we have now and what we are trying to plan in the LCP update to maintain.
My, my personal preference is to aim higher, to go to the eight acres per thousand residents that was in the 1990 plan. I, I don't know whether anybody else agrees with me or not, but I think we really should have a goal that's more ambitious than what we have right now, which is, you know, right now, it's pretty good, but I would much prefer that we at least had a target of eight acres per thousand residents.
So I think it would be helpful for staff to define what that five acres includes, because I'm guessing it doesn't include, you know, like publicly-owned, inaccessible open space and beaches and things like that.
So the five acres per thousand includes city-owned and maintained parks for active use, although it does include part of Poplar, because we, we take care of that segment of the coastal trail in that area. It does not include any of the state beach area, the beach that is part of Poplar. It doesn't include anything that would be part of the county's park system that might dip into the city. And we also didn't include all of the Johnston House property, because some of it has habitat on it, and it can't be used as parkland. So it's very specific to what you see as, well, actually, a really good example is Frenchman's Creek Park or Carter Park, where we have, and Oak Avenue Park, where we have the creek going through, it's part of the parcel. We don't, we didn't count any of those areas that include Pillar Cetus Creek or Frenchman's Creek, because they are not active park areas. So you have a lot more open space, well beyond the five acres per thousand. So we, we do want to be clear about that. I think that's what you were wondering. Okay.
So there's kind of a separate but related issue, and that is, I think it's a good policy for every neighborhood to have some park space, right? So if we have a PUD, and we have some housing, you know, we need like another small park like Frenchman's Creek or Keel. So that doesn't, the five acres per thousand doesn't preclude us from requiring a park in a new neighborhood if we do a new neighborhood.
Absolutely not. You, you can do that, and your draft plan includes that, but it's not on the agenda, so I'm not going to dig into that.
The other comment I have is about Smith Field. If I remember right, there's a comment in there that it would be, I don't know what the right word is, in any future plans, if at all possible, it would be good to try to relocate the Smith Field fields, because they really are an environmentally sensitive area that we, it's unfortunate that it was built that way in the first place, but I want to concur that we should be open to allowing relocating those fields, if at all possible. And I understand it's almost impossible, but I think we should not preclude that possibility in order to try to preserve the environmental sensitive areas where Smith Park is now. That's my other comment.
So I move we adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Half Moon Bay for the adoption of the Parks Master Plan and adoption of the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? It passes. Thank you, Jill, thank you, Scott. The last item on our agenda is the review of the Half Moon Bay Municipal Code about contributions and loans to City Council candidate campaigns. This is required to be done after every city council elections, and whatever we decide will pertain to the 2020 City Council elections. Is anybody going to give a staff report, or do we just?
I can. Thanks for starting to report me.
Okay, thank you, Jessica.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. This item is on your agenda, as it is a requirement of the municipal code, that after each city council election, the council reviews its campaign contribution ordinance. The ordinance was adopted in 2005, and the original limits were $250 by an individual and $500 by an organization. However, in 2007, the ordinance was reviewed, and it was amended to allow for $1,000 maximum contributions by an individual or a corporation. So again, as required by the municipal code, this ordinance is in front of you for review to determine if the council would like to make any changes for the 2020 elections.
Are we also talking about candidates contributing to their own campaign?
So the loan amount, the outstanding balance at any given time can be $5,000. That has not changed since 2005, but that, of course, is part of this ordinance and can be amended if desired.
So I did a little research and found somebody who'd looked at all the individual contribution limits in the cities in California. And so I looked at comparable-sized cities, like 10,000 to like 13,000 people. And Half Moon Bay is, is the largest in its category. Looking at Arcata, which is, well, a little higher, 17,000 people, actually 18,000. The individual contribution limit is $190 compared to our $1,000. The only city that I could find here that has $1,000 is the City of Commerce in LA County and Santa Ana, which is several hundred thousand people. Capitola, 200. Fillmore, 250. Healdsburg is 500. Laguna Woods, 250. Malibu, 250. Sausalito, 250. Scotts Valley, which is nearby, almost the same population, $100. So I'm, I'm actually in favor of reducing our current individual limits. 250 would be fine with me, you know, which, which it was before the 2007 amendments. As for PACs and things, I think 500 or $1,000, well, $1,000 is the limit right now for organizations. I would say cut it to 500. And I think you, to avoid the fat cat effect, I think you should, I think we should minimize loans to your campaign, too, especially in, if we have district elections where you need to reach maybe 1,500 people. You want people to go door-to-door or do other sort of grassroots campaigning. And yeah, there's an initial fee to, you know, register, there's a, you got to put some money in your bank account. So I would say, you know, maybe loan amount, no more than about $500, you know, at any given time, or 1,000 at the most. So I'm in favor of reducing it, encouraging a more grassroots approach. I think that's more appropriate to the current regime we have, but I'm open to hearing from my fellows.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with you on principle. The, the self-loan, I would like to keep that at least 1,000, maybe 1,500, for, for the reason that there are times when you want to have a party say, and you've got to put the money up front. Now, people may come and donate to that occasion, but you've got to put the money up. So I, I think being a little bit more fluid to the self-loan thing, I'm, I'm happy with reducing it back to the 2005 standards in terms of individuals and, and organizations, but I, I think the self-loan needs to be more than $500. I mean, when, when we went and got our, our campaign signs, you know, that's 1,000, 1,500 just to order those signs, and that was the first batch of signs. So if you're not, if you're not keeping up with the donations, then you may not be able to campaign effectively.
I, I would agree to go higher than 500. I just, I don't think, you know, $5,000 is appropriate in a district, by-district election regime. Again, you know, signs is kind of a, it's easier to go buy a bunch of signs if you have money than it is to call your neighbors or go, or go door-to-door. So I could maybe go $1,000 or 1,500, but I...
When I, when I ran, I learned that running for election, the hardest part, I thought, was actually raising money, which was, and I didn't realize how much money you actually needed to run a campaign, which was also another scary aspect of what we got ourselves into when we did it. So I was fortunate to get some good contributions, but I'm not sure, I, I understand the limitation of limiting individuals and even organizations and loans as well, especially with district elections, because again, it's going to be a much smaller, that's a lot easier. But, you know, it's, it's hard, it's, it's hard enough to get money, and you do need to run a campaign as is. I don't want to make it too limiting for people to be able to run an effective campaign. But in the ideal, there wouldn't be that much money associated with it at all, obviously. But then I realized that was pot in the sky, and you actually have to do some money efforts to make the campaign happen. I'm okay with 250 by an individual, I'm okay with 500 by an organization, I'm okay with 1,500 for, for your own loan. I never loaned myself anything, so I'm not sure. Did I? Oh, I did? Okay, maybe I did. I don't think so, but either way, that's where, that's where I'd go with it.
I was curious, in 2005, I imagine some research was done as to what other communities were allowing. I'm sorry, 2000s. So why was it raised in the first place?
That might be a political question.
I can answer the question. It was a new council that came in, and they had a different philosophy. How's that?
Well, I'm a, I like the idea of going back to the old maximum amounts. I think, I don't know. I ran my election on a shoestring and have money left over, so there's a lot of different strategies one can utilize and not have tons of money, so...
I, I concur with the 250, 500, and 1,500 for generosity's sake. The other thing to realize is that in 2020, we're required to revisit this, because in 2022, right now, we're going to have a mayoral election as well as a district election. And I would propose that in 2020, we set different limits for the mayoral election, which has to be citywide compared to the one district election, which will be occurring in 2022. But for right now, I would like the 250 for any individual, 500 for any PAC or organization, and 1,500 maximum loan limits be reinstated.
Can I ask, do you know whether or not we can do that? We can set different limits for different positions?
We believe that you can, yes.
Okay.
Can I hear a motion?
So can I clarify the motion for you? The motion would be to direct staff to bring back an ordinance on first reading, changing the contribution limits to the 250 individual, 500 business, and $1,500 personal loan.
Right. Okay, everybody?
Move per staff? Give me a second.
Second. Second.
All in favor? Aye. The next item on the agenda is possible future agenda items. Do I hear any?
Yeah, I want to reiterate the need to bring back to council discussion on raising the minimum wage. And I'd also like us to start a discussion on banning single-use plastic containers in the City of Half Moon Bay.
I think we're going to be talking about priorities that are strategic planning sessions in our retreat, so I think we can talk about those things, and, because we're going to, there's going to be competing things for staff time, so we want to have a deep discussion about this, and we're going to be having listening sessions in the meantime, so...
Any city council reports? If not, this meeting is adjourned.
Woo! It's a record.